We will be starting the meeting shortly, and I please ask everyone to mute themselves. If they are not part of the meeting or speaking during public comment. All right, it is six eighteen and we are reconvening. If we can do a roll call, please. Trustee Calhoun. Yeah. Trustee Calhoun. Dr. Little.
Present.
Trustee Ramos.
Present.
Trustee Doppelmore.
Present.
President Lopez.
Present.
Dr. Curry.
Present.
Trustee Doppelmore, if you can lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Moving on to item number six, report of actions taken in closed session pursuant to governance code section five four eight five seven point one, there is nothing to report. Item number seven, Compton Community College District Resolution Number Eight fifteen twenty twenty two A continuing Board of Trustees Authority to hold virtual meetings pursuant to Assembly Bill three six one. Open meeting state and local agencies teleconference. Board members, do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Ramos and seconded by Dr. Little. Do we have any discussion? Trustee Ramos.
No discussion.
Dr. Little.
No discussion.
Trustee Doppelmore, no discussions. Trustee Calhoun is not on, correct? All right, see no discussion, board members, we are virtually holding our vote. If you can please vote. That's a unanimous yes vote. Thank you very much. Moving on to. Moving on to item number eight, approval of open session agenda, board members, do I have a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by trustee Ramos and seconded by trustee Doppelmore. Board members, do we have any discussion? Trustee Ramos.
No discussion.
Dr. Little.
No discussion.
Trustee Doppelmore.
No discussion.
See no discussion, if you could do the roll call, please. All right.
Is the vote coming up?
There needs to be.
One correction, trustee.
A correction under contract, so if you.
There's one contract that I need to fix is item number fourteen. Give me one second. Give me one second. Item fourteen point one three, it has a start date of July fifteenth, the start date should be August sixteenth, twenty twenty two. Item fourteen point one three.
I withdraw my motion.
And I. I withdraw my second.
All right, board members, we have approval of open session agenda eight point zero one with a edit to item fourteen point one three. Modification date to reflect August sixteenth, twenty twenty two. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda with correction?
So move.
And second it.
It's been moved by trustee Ramos and seconded by trustee Doppelmore. Do we have any discussion? Trustee Ramos.
No discussion.
Dr. Little.
No discussion.
Trustee Doppelmore.
No discussions.
See no discussion, if you please do the virtual. Vote. That is a unanimous yes vote. All right, moving on to item number nine, recognition, nine point zero one, Dr. Angela Williams, Chief of Staff with the Office of Assembly Member Gibson.
So we have online today, he wasn't able to be here, is Dr. Angelo Williams from Mike Gibson's office. He's actually going to be leaving the office, and I thought it was appropriate to recognize him for his service, and we will be sending him a plaque. But Angelo Williams has been in my gift office for a number of years as a chief of staff. He's been very instrumental with some of our advocacy as late to black for for Compton College. As relates to our funding for Compton College, but then also as it relates to our student housing. And so we want to show our appreciation for Dr. Williams by recognizing at today's meeting to say thank you for his service and his support of Compton College and Compton Community College District. And we wish him the best on his future employment, working in Sacramento with the LA five, is it? Is it the spa? What is it? Dr. Williams, the new firm you're going to? I don't get it wrong.
First five California.
First five California, but we want to say thank you for everything you have done for Compton College and Compton Community College District and recognize you for your service.
Thank you, if I if I might just make a a quick comment to say thank you. Dr. Curry and also to the board and also to Compton College for providing us such inspiration. When I first came on the job, the first conversation I had with you. Dr. Curry was about getting funding for the dorms. And it was something that was visionary, and we were able to do our job, which is the job of your elected officials to try to make that vision a reality. So I really appreciate this recognition. I also want to continue to say that Mr. Gibson is in strong support. Not only of your leadership, not only of the board's leadership, but of Compton College. Continue to cast that vision because there will always be strong support for that vision in the office of the assembly member Mike Gibson. So thank you. Also, I'm available to you at the statewide office of first five, first five, as you know, focuses on children zero to three, zero to five. And I'll be heading up their fatherhood initiative and happy to work with Compton College again in that capacity as well.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number ten, request to address the Board of Trustees on agenda and non-agenda items. Public, we do ask if you would like to participate, if you can, please raise your hand on the Zoom feature. If you are on the phone, we ask you to dial pound not, I apologize, we ask you to dial asterisk nine. And a staffer will give you a call. Right, see none, moving on.
Do we have any in the, no, we haven't, okay, we're good, sorry, okay. I didn't see you're not.
Moving on to item ten point zero two, Compton Community College District Board of Trustees Future Agenda Items Request, Board Members, trustee Ramos.
I do not have any at this time, thank you.
Dr. Little.
Just our continued work on the update of the nursing program and all of our successful programs in terms of pipeline for different industries. Thank you.
Trustee Doppelmore.
Yes, for a future agenda item, I would like to possibly see the. The. The workshop schedule or workshops for filing for financial aid. But at the community college level, we have a pending, we have a pending deadline that is approaching next month. So if we could just continue to see an update on any potential workshops that are scheduled, marketing or outreach, just to to see if we have. That information being top of mind to our Compton Community College students.
So when you say we have a pending deadline, what deadline you're referring to?
It's filing for filing for community colleges September second. To begin those, to begin those workshops.
Is that for the for Calgrids?
For, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number eleven, Board of Trustees Meeting Minutes, eleven point zero one minutes of July eighteen twenty twenty two Board of Trustees Meeting. Board members, do I have a motion?
So move.
I'll second it.
It's been moved by trustee Ramos and seconded by trustee Doppelmore, do we have any discussion? Trustee Ramos.
No discussion.
Dr. Little.
No discussion.
Trustee Doppelmore.
No discussion.
See no discussion, if you could do the roll call, please. I'm sorry, do your virtual vote. I will get used to it. That's a that's a unanimous yes vote. Got it. Moving on to item eleven point zero two, minutes of the July twenty third, twenty twenty two Board of Trustees Retreat.
So move.
I'll second.
It's been moved by trustee Ramos and seconded by trustee Doppelmore. Do we have any discussion? Trustee Ramos.
No discussion.
Dr. Little.
No discussion.
Trustee Doppelmore.
No discussions.
See no discussion, if you could please cast your online vote. That is a unanimous yes vote. All right, moving on to item number twelve, reports from representatives of employee organizations. First up, we have twelve point zero one Associated Student Government Report, Paul Medina. If you can please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me clearly?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. So good evening, Compton Community College Board of Trustees, President Curry, administrators, faculty, staff, students, and esteemed guests. This is Paul Medina, Associate Student Government President. Today's report will be rather somewhat brief, as you may recall during last month's board meeting. I mentioned how I intended to give a thorough review of student government during this meeting, although being that our student government retreat already took place this past Thursday and Friday. There's some important information to add, thus this report actually. Now, as academic year is, associate government has been working hard on getting the word out of our organizations. On July the twenty thirty, EST participated in Compton College Community Day. During this event, EST had the opportunity to connect with many incoming prospective students and share information about student government and how to get involved on campus. On August the second, Associate Students' Government held its first meeting of the academic year. We had a number of discussion items, which included creative future partnership, CP, or first aid instruction. To actually host CPR training on campus, and once a students and staff, and potentially reaching out to the community and collaborating with local organizations to train members of the community on CPR. On August eighth, they had the opportunity to meet with state white student leaders from the CESU system. And with states under money, Leonardo de Rosso, and the continued support for student housing for the next session. On the conversation with Senator Russell, about the need for more financially funding, this could be achieved in Calgram or expanded states financially, legal students. Which are largely, unfortunately, under represent. Housing issues, Compton's college planned student housing in the future was mentioned in this meeting. On this past week, on August eleventh and twelfth, Associate Student. This was a great event, which focused on exercises, brainstorming, and planning for the upcoming. Attentive schedule for these activities was constructed, and discussion about our budget took place. Associate Student Government Society of Participating. Welcome day, and is looking forward to participating in next week's welcome weekend. That is my report for this month. Thank you.
Moving on to item twelve point zero two, Academic Senate Report, Dr. Minidora.
Thank you. Good evening, Board of Trustees. It is very nice to see all of, most of you there present in person. I hope to join you hopefully at our next Board of Trustees meeting. The Academic Senate has not met over the summer, and we will not be meeting until September first. So I hope to bring news at that point after our first meeting. Thank you for your time.
Moving on to twelve point zero three, CCCFE Certified Employees Report, Jeanette Morales. Moving on to twelve point zero four, CCCFE Classified Employees Report, Aminqua McKenzie. Item number thirteen for presentations, thirteen point zero one, Dr. Curry.
To provide an update on the final budget assumptions, as the Board of Trustees is fully aware. Our board, at the September board meeting, we have to bring forward the finalized budget for next year. And so over the last couple of weeks, we've been working on closing our books, but also preparing a budget for next year. I think our budget for next year with those budget assumption is a comprehensive budget assumptions. Regards to all the things that we're paying for, and then later on in the agenda, there's another item that you want to see with discuss. Regards to our planning documents and what do we fund it, because that connects to the final budget assumptions. So I'd turn it over to Dr. Nasser.
Thank you, Dr. Curry. President Lopez, board members. I present to you the assumptions for the final budget. Next slide, please. So we'll talk about the assumptions, the next steps, and then I'll entertain any questions you may have. So at this point, as Dr. Curry mentioned, we're still in the process of closing the books, so that first item there is an estimate of a fund balance of twenty five million dollars. Based on our advanced apportionment, we expect our revenues to be forty eight million plus. As you know, we are on hold harmless. COLA is at six point five six percent. I want to bring to your attention the two items on under retirement systems, Calpers and Calsters. And as you can see, those are, those are some substantial increases, and that impacts our Understood General Fund. Next slide, please. So these are the seven faculty positions that we envision in the budget. The state has funded for these positions. And if I'm not mistaken, most of these positions have been filled at this point. Next slide, please. We plan to fill some of the vacant full-time faculty positions, guided pathways, counseling, HVAC, historic history and ethnic studies, and nursing. If you recall, at the time when we were transitioning, we did have a grant. As we became fully accredited, the grant expired and ended last year. There were certain positions in the IT area that were being funded from that recovery fund. And now we have to support those positions out of the Understood General Fund. Those are the two positions that are remaining. Last year, we paid out of one point nine, the recovery fund now that we pay out of the unrestricted fund. Next slide, please. So we have augmentations of one million. As you can see, the first item is enrollment management plan. We really want to beef up and try to increase our enrollment, and so we've identified six hundred thousand dollars for for that purpose. There's budget augmentation enhancements for three hundred fifty thousand. The several enrichment activities you will recall, we brought to your attention that we were setting aside a hundred thousand dollars for that initiative. We used forty five thousand from last year's funds and fifty five thousand from this year's fund. Line of credit, we want to wrap up on the line of credit by fiscal year twenty twenty six, so we are on that trajectory, and that's what you had approved. I think it was last year that you had approved that amount. OPEP, we are doing the contribution, one-time augmentation of six hundred thousand, and then we're doing the person's contribution of, you want to slide that up, two hundred thousand dollars. Next slide, please. So we're setting aside reserves, our earmarking reserves for the enterprise resource planning, three point seven million, four hundred thousand, and the district personnel commission. And three hundred fifty thousand for the fire academy. Next slide, please. So we envisioning a interfund transfers of four hundred thousand for property liability, a hundred fifty thousand for child development, one point three million dollars for capital outlay. I just wanted to point out here that we have a computer replacement plan in place through FY twenty twenty nine. So everybody's computer on that desk and our computer labs will be fully funded with up-to-date technology. Next slide, please. We have transfers to the Capital Outlay Fund. The first one is for visual and performing arts, as you know, costs are going up, so we got a plan for that, same as with the. To pay for the physical ad plant complex. And then the third one is, we have the secret study, you'll be approving the bid that we received, and we need twenty fifty thousand dollars to to pay for that project. Next slide, please. So in September, as Dr. Curry mentioned, you'll be approving the final budget. The budget will be available for public viewing effective August twenty ninth. And then at September twelfth, the board will act and adopt the budget. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
All right, board members, trustee Ramos.
I have no questions. Thank you for that succinct report on Dr. Nasser.
Dr. Little. Trustee Doppelmore.
Yes, Dr. Nasser, you mentioned the PERS and the STIRS, right, the STIRS? The increase, I believe it's on page seven, the stabilization fund of the two hundred thousand, is that just an all up for those buckets? Or is that because of the increase in those two payments?
That's two different items.
Okay.
Did you want me to elaborate?
Is it just?
So the one is the ongoing, we have to pay, and this is, we have established a fund, way back, we established a fund to support future costs. And so we're just contributing to that fund, and you also see in the board packet the balances as we carry forward in in those funds.
Okay, thank you.
All right, seeing, thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Moving. Moving on to item number fourteen for consent agenda.
So move.
I'll second it.
Motion has been moved by trustee Ramos and seconded by trustee Doppelmore. Do we have any questions or discussion? Trustee Ramos.
I do not have any questions, thank you.
Dr. Little. Trustee Doppelmore.
I'm sorry, I have no questions. I'm having problems with connectivity. Thank you.
No questions.
Got it. I do want to take an opportunity, I know trustee Calhoun is not here, but normally does ask that the questions that she did ask of Dr. Curry be placed in the chat. And so on her behalf, I want to ensure that it is posted and you do share that.
And it is posted, I'll post it.
Perfect, thank you so much. All right, see no further discussion, if we could do the virtual vote. Dr. Little, will you need to do a verbal vote, or are you able to? Dr. Little, will you need to do a verbal vote or are you able to do the virtual? Dr. Little.
If she's not allowed to vote, would you, would you be recorded as a no vote? That she did not vote, sorry.
She just unmuted herself. I wanted to give her an opportunity. Dr. Little, will you be casting your vote virtually or verbally?
I'm sorry, I can cast it verbally and then I will try to, I keep trying to restart, so I apologize for the delay. Let me try one last time. I think it's going to go through now. Did you get it?
Yes, it did go through. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sorry.
That's a unanimous yes vote. All right, moving on to item number 15 for Action Items. Board Members, we start off with 15.01 Board of Trustees Provision Statement.
So move.
Second.
It has been moved by Trustee Ramos and seconded by Dr. Little. Do we have any discussion? Trustee Ramos.
No discussion.
Dr. Little.
No.
Trustee Doppelmore.
No discussion.
Seem, no discussion. If we could, please do our virtual vote. That's a unanimous yes vote. All right, moving on to 15.02 for 2022-2023 Board of Trustees Goals. Do I have a motion?
So move.
I'll second. It has been moved by Trustee Ramos and seconded by Trustee Doppelmore. Do we have any discussion? Trustee Ramos.
No discussion.
Dr. Little.
No discussion.
Trustee Doppelmore.
No discussions.
Seem, no discussion. Please cast your online vote. That's a unanimous yes vote. Moving on to 15.03 Administrative Services, Compton Community College District Resolution Number 0815 2022B Budget Augmentations for the Fiscal Years 2022-2023.
So move.
I'll second. It has been moved by Trustee Ramos and seconded by Trustee Doppelmore. Do we have any discussion? Trustee Ramos.
No discussion.
Dr. Little. Trustee Doppelmore.
No discussion.
Seem, no discussion. Please cast your online vote. That's a unanimous yes vote. 15.04 Administrative Services for Compton Community College District Resolution Number 0815 2022C Budget Transfers for the Fiscal Year 2022-2023.
So move.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Trustee Ramos and seconded by Trustee Doppelmore. Do we have any discussion? Trustee Ramos.
No discussion.
Dr. Little.
No discussion.
Trustee Doppelmore.
No discussion.
Seem, no discussion. Please cast your online vote. That's a unanimous yes vote. All right, moving to 15.05 Facilities Planning and Development Contracts Over 99,100 for Placeworks.
So move.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Trustee Ramos and seconded by Trustee Doppelmore. Do we have any discussion? Trustee Ramos.
No discussion.
Dr. Little.
No discussion.
Trustee Doppelmore.
No discussions.
Seem, no discussion.
Yes.
I just want to make a comment regards to the item. This item, the connection goes to the presentation from Dr. Nasser regards to our SEQU that we budgeted for. So this is the contract that's connected to our budget assumptions. I just want to make sure that was on the record.
Got it, thank you so much. Virtual votes. That's a unanimous yes vote. Moving on to 15.06 Facilities Planning and Development Contracts Over 99,100 Amendment Go Up Education Construction Insurance Instructional Building Number Two.
So move.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Trustee Ramos and seconded by Trustee Doppelmore. Do we have any discussion? Trustee Ramos.
No discussion.
Dr. Little.
No discussion.
Trustee Doppelmore.
No discussions.
Please cast your online vote. That's a unanimous yes vote. Moving on to item number 16 for Discussion and Action. 16.01 New Program Recommendations from the Academic Senate. Dr. Curry.
Yeah, so it'd be, uh, last one, we had a conference, we had a conference regarding to the academic programs. And what we did, uh, worked with our Vice President of, I don't even care, Sherry Berger, would provide more information, this is, this document, all of the documents. So the Academic Center has some more specific programs that they're looking at. And as we have, we, we gave the Academic Center, President of the Academic Center, they talked about the new simply, provided some specific information. And then we also shared, we're sharing email that Lauren had sent them. That, we sent emails every day, that includes all the separation and also the new suffering for programs that include the labor that, that we have asked about. Also including the higher post program that was all talked about, that also supported us. So our goal now is to give all the information that we're sending and then to do their work and fill out the presentation that we need. And then on October 31st, we have a recommendation from them on particularly new programs. But all the, the programs are based off the data and potential jobs within, within LA County, Orange County, for individuals in these particular sectors. I, I do often avoid to see that we go through this process is that we might have particular programs who might be missing in. But it always kind of go back to the, the, sorry, the, the demand.
It always come back to the demand. And so if we don't have the demand for the particular program, we can't move forwards to implement because individuals have an interest in a certain program. And so what we're trying to do is provide all the data and relying primarily on the Academic Senate regards to potential programs. And then from there, we will start working with the Academic Senate regards to potential costs and what it might look like. And then bring forward a formal recommendation to the Board of how we want to move forward. But I thought our last conversation with the Academic Senate was very, was very good that we had earlier this month. The key is to give them time to really go through those programs and through the data and be able to provide and fill out the form that we, that we created for them. And then from there, we can be able to move forward. I think this is an interesting process because normally we, we don't look at it from this level. What happens is it goes through the curriculum process. And from the curriculum process, once a board approves, the board is able to know what programs are coming forward. But this is more so connected to our particular new programs or new opportunities for us. And so I think it's important that we help to drive the conversation of how we move it forward, rather than just waiting for curriculum to be developed. And so this gives us the opportunity to share data and information with the Board, with the Academic Senate, and also with the Board, and then really come through with the concrete plan of what programs want to implement at Compton College that will meet the needs, the, the employment needs of individuals from our community in those particular sectors. And so through my conversation with the Academic Senate today, which I wasn't able to finish, but I know they might want to reduce their list of six to really try to focus in on particular programs, which I think is a great idea. And so, so once we get the information back from them, we can be able to move forward. But now you have a documentation of how, how we're moving forward with these particular programs. But I also know that there's conversations about, that Trustee Calhoun brought up about truck driving. Works, work study, there's a couple.
Workforce development.
Workforce development, there's, there's different programs. And we're, we're just trying to, we're trying to monitor it all. But it's just trying, trying to figure out how we can generate FTS. I do have concerns where we talk about looking at truck driving. I think we have a partnership to refer individuals, but to have trucks on campus and what space will we be able to do that? How we write curriculum for that? I think that's something difficult for us. But also too, are we looking at our programs, we looking at contract ed versus programs that meet the FTS needs of the district? I would recommend to the Board and also I recommend to the Academic Senate is focusing on programs that would generate FTS for the college, rather than focus on programs that would have to be in a partnership with someone else that does not generate FTS for the college. Because there are certain things you can do as a partnership with individuals. However, that means you're not going to be able to generate FTS for the college and the operations of the college. And so my focus is about generating FTS for the college that links to potential jobs within our community based off of data. And so you see all the data that we have been able to provide to the Academic Senate as we move forward. And in a board letter this month, Sherry provided information about what new programs that have been developed since 2019. And I know that was a topic of conversation at the Board Retreat, but I include in the board letter what programs were, what programs were developed through the curriculum process at Compton College since the partnership with L. County College dissolved. And that concludes my update. I'm, I'm open for any direction, any questions, concerns for the Board.
Trustee Ramos.
Like, I, I'm reading it and I, I like the, the six that are, that are listed and how you mentioned like, I don't know if these specifically the six, but how, yeah, it's driven by data. Like what are the, the needs of LA County and Orange County? But when, when other ones are suggested, like with what Trustee Calhoun suggested, I, I would hope like with the, the CDL, the truck driving, like we, we also, before going too deep into that, we look, we make sure that we're not stepping on or that, that there's overlap with some of our like unified school districts. Because I, I, I thought I've seen that, that Compton Unified had something like an ROP program for like truck driving, how to attain your CDL license. And so I, I think we should be wary about that. That's all I have.
And maybe what we could do, Trustee Ramos, is that we could probably, as we look at these programs and what's on the list as we move forward, and in adult, in the notes, we can provide information about who else is providing those programs. So is the program being provided by a K-12 district in our area? Is it being provided by another community college? Just so the Board has that information too. Because if you start a new program that another college is, is operating, what's going to be the difference between our program and that program for, as ways to recruitment of students? So I think that, that would be helpful for the Academic Senate, but also for the Board.
Dr. Little.
Yes, um, thank you. I, um, following up again with what, uh, Trustee Ramos said. I think whatever programs we want to look at, I don't think it should preclude us from pursuing them, but we should at least have like a, an overview of the landscape in terms of established programs, how long they've been established. Um, I think there should be some trend data. We know that tech is not going anywhere, so I see game design, software and application design, machine learning and artificial intelligence. Would love to know if we have already started conversations like with many other companies over in the Culver City areas where our students could get internships connected to this curricula and ways in which it could be sustained in terms of long-term careers, maybe with even our partnerships with CSUs to see if they're four-year programs that these could be feeders to. That could also increase attendance and interest. Thank you.
Trustee Doppelmore.
Yes, I, um, I know we have a lot, I know we have a lot of things that are presently in the works. And I do appreciate, Dr. Curry, you know, I'm clarifying, you know, the objective to have, you know, to have programs that generate full-time, you know, FTEs for Compton College. But I would just hope that maybe, you know, when we, when things kind of settle, that we will offer community-based learning, I believe that's what it's called, community learning, to offer some additional programs for the community as well as students that, you know, that are looking to reclassify or maybe get a certificate or just, you know, take a simple, you know, health and wellness class or computer class. You know, I would look, I would like to offer, you know, maybe something like that for the community, but that's moving forward. So that's my comment on that on the future programs. And I do appreciate the format of the, of the programs that are presently before us and just using data in terms of looking at the potential unemployment opportunities. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on to item 16.02 Compton College Full-Time Equivalent Students.
So this is the report of affairs on the Vice President, the Vice of Affairs, and also to the Secretary of Sherry Berger, and also Nicole Jones. You know, this is about our number, it's still been out into the days of the past years, but we're about 4049.
Davis having fun with me about, uh, muting my mic. I see this, David. I see you have a pattern on this one. But let me start over. So this was prepared by our Vice President of Academic Affairs and Student Services, Sherry Berger, and also Nicole Jones regards to our enrollment and where we're at. But what's fascinating about our numbers, and I don't want to get too excited about this, is that right now it shows us about 4.9% down. And so what's been happening over the last week and a half, two weeks, every time that we come up with a report is showing that percentages are decreasing about the number down compared to last year. And so I don't want to get too excited about it. I want to continue to keep doing what we're doing and continue to push as ways to enrollment. But we had a, we had a major shift in our numbers over this past weekend. So it's really fascinating when you look at our, our data and what's happening with the enrollment. But the key for us now is to continue to push as classes will be starting this week, this week Saturday. But we went from 7.2% down compared to, now we're basically at, we're at 4.9% down compared to last year at this time. And so we're going to continue to push. We have our call center making calls. We have our street teams out in the community. They're out a couple of sites this past weekend. I actually had the opportunity to check that out this weekend. I came to Compton to look at that, how that's going. And so we're going to continue to be out there as relates to enrollment and services, but also keeping an eye out for next year and what needs to be done. So this provides you a comprehensive report, gives you the sense of who we're seeing and what we're doing. It also gives you an update on our five-year FTS projections. And I probably want to talk about FTS a little bit more at the next Board Meeting for 2021, 2022. And that concludes the update on enrollment and where we're at.
Questions or discussion, Board Members? Trustee Rom.
No discussion.
Dr. Little. Trustee.
No discussion.
No discussions.
All right, thank you so much. Moving on to item number 16.03 for Report on the 2022-2023 Annual Planning Cycle at Compton College.
So Lauren, can you open up the attachment? What I, what I find very, this is, so just so everyone knows, this is something that we do every single year regards to our planning, and this is our final report that we share with the campus community as a way to close the loop on the funding. It gives you a clear update on which programs or departments submitted their program plans for the year. So that's documented for us. But then it also gives you the process of rolling up the budgets and the budget requests based off of the recommendations from the different departments in different areas. And so on page six through page, page six through page 21, you get information about all the stuff that we're funding. We're funding about $1.3 million worth of programs and projects. And we also include information about evaluation and how we need to approve the evaluation on some of our projects that were funded. But this documents our whole planning process. And I hope that the credit commission, when they come out and see our campus and read our report, that this is documented as a part of accommodations. Because this is, I think this is really good. I have not seen this at any other community college where we're able to document not only the general fund, but even a categorical funds regards to funding and projects and things we want to pay for. So it's pretty good where we're at, but it's about $1.3 million worth of information. And so our next phase that we need to work on is with some of our categoricals. We received in our budget this year several new categorical dollars. For example, we received close to $7 million for scheduled maintenance and also for instructional equipment. So we have to start preparing those budgets and spend that money out by 2028. But the way our process is working, which I think is outstanding, we're able to look at multiple budgets to be able to fund projects by divisions. And so this is very clear about what we've been funding, but we've been doing this for the last four, four or five years. Wait, four years, right, Lauren? Four years. And this work has been done by, led by Lawrence Asencle. And so I'm taking her side by doing the report. Lauren, do you want to add anything?
Uh, no, thank you. I'm just very excited that, for the amount that we were able to.
Uh, no, thank you. I'm just very excited that for the amount that we were able to fund this year, and I hope that this investment in our campus. Um, helps us, you know, move into those big shiny buildings with more equipment and projects. So it's exciting. Thank you.
So just to correct myself, it was one point two million. And that's included on page six. Is there any questions from the board trustees?
Trustee Ramos.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Dr. Little.
No questions. Thank you.
Trustee Doppelmore.
Yes, um, glad to see the amount of just different programs and approval in the area. My village, it's uh instructional equipment, I believe is that like related to, um, it looks like it's science. It's on page um eight, starting and it kind of goes into nine a little bit.
Yes.
And and just so everyone knows, this is connected to their plans. So in their plans, these are what. Faculty and staff said that they need in order to move forward, and this is our documentation, so that we provide it to them. And we've been doing this for the last four years, so it documents all of our funding requests. But also too, just to add to to your comment, Dr. Dr. Uh, trustee Doppelmore. If you look, if you look at the the recommendations for the uh schedule maintenance. These are all based off of the plans. And then we also included the section about the evaluation, because we want to get better at that, and that's something that we're really going to be pushing on. As regards to evaluation, to making sure things were are spent and spent according to what they said they're going to do. And that's why we want to really tighten up our evaluation and Lauren in the report talks about, that's one of the areas you want to improve on.
Uh, if I would just um, um, Dr. Curry, I just see like the um, um, the excess. The of um, you know, that are in the different program plans, just to um. Is there like a time limit or like a notification on when those plans can be submitted? And you know, um, um, a suspense state? Is that, um, is that given to the other departments to allow everyone the opportunity to um, you know, to submit their report?
Yeah, so Lauren is giving people timelines and reminders. And the the process that works is that if people do not submit their plans, then they will not be funded. And so we're going to continue to push that is that people have to do their plans. Because we can't just automatically fund uh individuals or programs if they don't have a program plan. Because the process for planning should be linked to your program review and also student learning out, student. Learning outcomes and also student area outcomes to be able to improve our organization, which ties to accreditation standards. So if people do not submit their their plans and we provide it to them, we're doing everything we're supposed to. The key is that we just don't fund those projects. And so we had that, we had that area happen last year with one department that was funded. However, they didn't do their program plan, so we did not provide them with the money. So you have to do your program plan. There's there, if if people do not do their program plan and are funded, then there's no incentive of doing it. And it's a part of the accreditation standards. So we gave them the opportunity to do it and would do it again this year, but if people do not do it, it should be in their evaluation. And then also it should be as a part of. And then they also should not be funded. And I made that very clear.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Alright, moving on to item number seventeen for grant items, seventeen point zero one administrative services grants, next gen climate America. Board members. I'll second. It's been moved by trustee Ramos and seconded by trustee Doppelmore. Do we have any discussion?
No discussion.
Dr. Little.
No discussion, but just a quick question. Um, going back to how this could relate to careers and. A lot is being talked about in terms of climate, so just wondering if there was any connectivity or opportunity for that.
So the what happened with this one is this is the grant that we worked on with Next Gen about the um, that we're doing for California volunteers. So in our proposal, we talked about their role as rates of the grant. Uh, but I think in the future, as we continue to have conversation with Next Gen, we have additional conversations with them about future programs as relates to climate. And so one of the things that I did last week when I met with Next Gen is we talked about scheduling monthly meetings. Because there's various things that we're talking about now. We've been talking about some basic need stuff uh the last couple of weeks. And so one of the things that we could talk to them about is um the new program that's raised to climate, but I will, but we meet with them now monthly.
And just, I'm sorry, I did have uh another question. So is this different from the AmeriCorps partnership?
This is, this is a part of the AmeriCorps partnership.
Okay.
They're one of our, they're one of our, one of the individual, one of the groups that we contract out services to assist us with the implementation of the program.
Okay, great. And and we'll be able to track. Not only the process, but after the program through Next Gen, like the students trajectories. Like if they enter into, you know, these particular fields, because we know that many of the outdoor, for example. Um, uh, fields are not very uh representational as it relates to students of color or people of color. So I think would be important just to kind of track the trajectory from participation in this program. Both on the impact of the community, but also if it leads to uh workforce increase.
What we would do at the next meeting, we provide a, actually at October meeting, we'll probably provide an update as late to the evaluation of the. Uh, volunteer corp grant, and then we could take in consideration what you just mentioned. And just as a, just a moment of record for the for the public, included in our board letters this month, uh, which are posted and we drop it in the chat. Uh, including the the board letters this month, we included in from an update from uh Monique Anderson and Lionel. But Lionel, Lionel, I don't want to mess up Lionel and Liddell. I always got caught up just now. Uh, but from Lionel regards to the update on our AmeriCorps program and what we're doing in regards to that, and that was included in the letter and Heather dropping in the chat right now.
Thank you.
Trustee Doppelmore.
How many sessions? Um, this is the same, they have the sessions where um. They're providing the information sessions to those particular nonprofits as well that are going to be. Uh, participating or seeking uh student services and support.
Lionel. So I asked Lionel to come up as the director of adult and workforce development who's overseeing this project. So you can be able, because some of the questions are with the details, I don't have all the details. So can you repeat the question for Lionel?
Um, this particular, this is the um, this is the agency that's working. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Lionel. How are you this afternoon, this evening? This is the same agency that's working with the AmeriCorps and as well as this next gen grant. So the um, the outreach that they are providing, they're doing outreach to those particular nonprofits, they're having like information sessions. For those particular nonprofits that are seeking the support of the students, is that correct?
This group is working directly with our student population to provide program administration. In the tech support, uh, kind of like help desk, uh, skill set building. So that's one of the specialty areas because Compton Paramount Linwood. Sort of reside in what is considered a uh digital desert. Uh, many people don't have access to support for computers and certain technology. Um, we're taking a group of students and we're going to use those students in this capacity. To serve the community with free services uh for tech support. And um related types of uh supports.
Thank you, Mr. Lionel. So this is the tech side of that, that other.
That's correct.
And they're also doing, are they doing outreach to, are they also doing outreach to the community that are also looking for those students as well?
Yes, our students themselves uh will be performing that type of service. They'll be serving at our farmers market here on campus. As well as going out to even assisting seniors like at the uh Dollar High Community Center. And um, some of the local adult schools uh will have a representative there. So we're trying to spread them out and give them a variety of different types of experiences. Uh, kind of in building that skill set in a uh particular pipeline workforce area to build some tech skills. You're welcome.
Moving on to item number eighteen, Board of Policies and Administrative Regulations, Dr. Curry. Oh wait, actually, no, I need to go back. We need to vote on this. I take that back. Um, item number seventeen, um, can we do a virtual?
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Thank you so much. Now moving on to board, number eighteen, Board Policies and Administrative Regulations, Dr. Curry.
I just want to provide an update before David put them, I forgot to unmute, so David got me. I got it before he got to me. Uh, I just want to provide an update on a couple. We have a a bit on our board policy regards to district smoking. Uh, basically what it means is there's no smoking on campus, which we already had as a policy, is some cleanup language to that for review. Uh, then also we have the standards of student conduct, which is some verbiage changes, and we just need to clean up some language there, so that's there for the board. We also have the this, the clean version last month, it was shared, the updated council and committee structure. Uh, and then we also are repealing our administrative regulation thirty five seventy one, because previously we had trust, we had trustee areas. We had smoking areas on campus and now since there's no smoking on campus, then there's no need to have the administrative regulation. And the board in previous years approved the no smoking on campus, but we want to clean up the language, but then also repeal the administrative regulation. And then you also have the update on the um, for receiver information, board policy fifty five hundred. And that's it.
Board members, any questions or comments? Alright, moving on to item number nineteen, information items.
So there's a lot of information items this month. I just want to call attention to a couple of things. One is the foundation. Uh, I think a lot of work has been done with the foundation uh and how we're moving forward. And in the presentation, it provides the update. Uh, right now, the foundation is working on an event for October the eighteenth. Uh, where they're going to do a event for their first event will be on campus. Uh, it'd be in the little, sorry, the library student success center in the art gallery. And so we're working to move forward as ways to that. Uh, and I'm excited about where we're at on that one. So I want to make sure I highlight that for the board trustees regards to the foundation and moving forward. Also, I think what's important also too for the board to to see, if you look at item number. Uh, nineteen point one five, nineteen point one six, I'm sorry, nineteen point one seven, which provides the update on our our uh purrs and stirs. Our our pension stabilization trust and our uh OPEB, other post support benefit liability irrevocable trust. You see that the market is starting to rebound a little bit. And so the last couple of months, we've been, it's been declining, and so now our trust has been increasing. I don't want to get too excited about that, but I think it's important for the board to see how the market is starting to rebound a little bit. And I I I don't, I'm not a a economist, but I just think it's interesting as gas prices are going down, the market is, the the demand that we. That what we're earning for the market is going up. And so I don't know if there's a correlation, but some of the economists might say that, and Dr. Nash is shaking his head, so I might be on the right track. So I want to make sure I update the board on that as well. Um, then the final thing is the board of trustees regards to your board of trustees report schedule. Just want to make sure you're aware that I added a update for September, which is the financial aid department update, because we have talked about financial aid. And what we're doing financially, and we we also proved the consultant to be hired to assist us in that area. But I want to make sure I highlighted that in the next board meeting with the board report, and that concludes the information items.
Alright, moving on to item number twenty, future agenda items, Dr. Curry.
So at the next board meeting, we have the final budget presentation and adoption. We also have an update on guided pathways, an update on professional development, where we offer a wealth of professional opportunities. And then also, as I mentioned, a financial aid department update.
Do you want to do all in item twenty, or you want me to go through each one?
I did them all.
Moving on to twenty one, oral reports, Dr. Curry.
So I have a lot to say with word reports, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna slow down a little bit. Uh, the first thing is that tomorrow we have our new faculty orientation, uh, which is all. All day for new faculty and then tomorrow night we have our adjunct faculty orientation. Wednesday, we have our new student welcome day, uh, welcoming our new students to campus. And then on Thursday, we have our professor development day for faculty and also classified staff. So it's a busy week for us, and then next week we start with our welcome week activities for students and also for employees. So a lot of things are happening this next week, but the next two weeks, and we're going to continue to push to get those things done. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, at the September twelfth meeting, we have the board uh report. Uh, we, we have the board, the budget for the board at the September twelfth meeting, and so we're working on trying to finalize that. Also too, just want to put on for everyone is that we have our report to the state chancellor's office regards to the FIGMAT recommendations, which is due by September fifteenth. And the closeout report, I I want to say thank you to the cabinet group. Because over the last uh five or six months, as a part of our succession planning, they created this really cool document. And I call it cool because nobody else has it. And so this is our action plan document timeline. So this timeline is basically when all reports are due to the state, federal government, and then also internal top timelines. So they create this one document which they're going to update uh basically every, every month and keep it on the succession plan drive. I shared it with some of my colleagues in the system, they don't have it, but it's a good way for us to be able to track. All of the stuff that we have to do, so we don't miss deadlines. And so I think that was a, I'm really proud of the work that the cabinet group did as it relates to that. Uh, and the final piece is, I do want to say last week we had a ice cream event for employees. And I want to say thank you to Pilar Hoffman for making that work. And the show, it's been hot, one, but also to show our appreciation to the employees, we had an ice cream truck here last week, Wednesday. And we had a really good turnout from employees and also from students who are participating. And the final piece I do want to talk about, I should have said this, is I met with uh every table today. Regards to their EBT set of cow fresh setup and then also regards to their menu, and they said they're going to do better. And so I just want to let everyone know that I talked to their CEO today, but our um. Dr. Nash has been really talking to every table regards to food and food options. Because we're paying for food for all of our students for next year, for this next fiscal year, and we want to make sure that they have a couple of different options as raised to food. The last couple of weeks has not been, the options have not been great, as I've been told by employees and Dr. Nash has been very upset about that. And that concludes my report.
Trustee Ramos.
No report. Thank you.
Dr. Little.
No, thank you.
Trustee Doppelmore.
Um, yes, last month I had, I did have the opportunity to attend um the community event. Um, um, towards the tail end there, but I was able to um, you know, to catch a few incoming. Um, I guess graduate, high school graduates um that were looking to um exploring. Um, the campus in um considering Compton College. So that was really good. Um, just continuing, just to attend um events in the community. And just connecting with um students, just real excited and looking forward um to um. Um, the fall, the fall semester. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, do we have Jean on the line? Alright. Well then, moving on to item number twenty two, our next regularly scheduled board meeting will be on September twelfth, twenty twenty two. Closed session will begin at five and open session will begin at six. Board members, it is seven twenty two and this meeting is adjourned.